Good evening, I started to say afternoon. Welcome, we appreciate your attendance at the meeting. And at this time, I'd like to call the September 3rd Board Meeting to order. It is the 3rd, yes. We have the presentations of the colors by North Buncombe. Would you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda's approved. At this time, we'll hear from our Superintendent, Dr. Tony Baldwin.
It's always great to have teachers in the audience. In my many visits to our campuses throughout our school system, I can honestly say that we really had a good first week start to the new school year. And I want to extend my thanks especially to the North Buncombe Elementary School staff and community for their patience with the two-day delay. We had a delayed start, and we felt that that was the safest decision to allow us to address, there was a possibility of some carpet mold issue that would have impacted our students and staff, so I really do appreciate their patience. Our school performance grades for 2014-15 school year, they were officially released yesterday, and I'm very proud of the, of our, first off, our 2% increase in our four-year graduation rate. I know we have Eblon Charities here, and Graduation Initiative is one of their key programs. That was a 2% increase from the year previously, we moved from 83 to 85%. And I hope as we continue our efforts, not only with the Graduation Initiative, but a lot of, a lot of efforts being made through our counseling staff and social working staff, that we're going to see that continue to increase as the years go on. Likewise, we are very pleased that 92% of our schools received a C or higher, that's compared to 72% of schools across the state of North Carolina. 73% of our schools also either exceeded or met their growth targets. And congratulations to our Early College and Nesbit Discovery Academy, and I see a few staff from both of those schools here tonight. 16 of our schools received Bs, which was an increase from the prior year. And on the opposite end of the scale, we had three of our schools that received Ds. For Emma and Johnston Elementary Schools, that was the second year in a row. But I do want to point this out, because I think it's extremely important, that we realize that while that particular grade was assigned to these schools, that both schools made their growth targets. And for Emma Elementary, this is actually the second year in a row that they exceeded their growth targets. Now, I say this, and that it's important that we remember that the particular formula that's in place for assigning these grades weighs as far as growth, very low. Only 20% of that total grade is based upon growth. And for schools such as Johnston and Emma, that growth is absolutely crucial, and I would certainly argue that all the way to the General Assembly in Raleigh. So I hope that's something that, that particular formula is continued to be looked at. I think we advocate as a profession that there be a better balance between the growth and actual performance. I also want to say this too, about with Emma and Johnston, because I'll tell you, I spent a lot of time that first week in both of those schools. I've got five grandchildren, I've got a six coming in January, and I want to just say that being in those schools and going to those classrooms, both of those schools, if those are, those D schools, I'll tell you right now, I would not blink having any one of my grandchildren inside those schools. The teachers are incredibly dedicated, they're both nurturing schools, and I think that's important. That's just a personal opinion that I'm going to take an opportunity to share.
Indeed.
For the board's knowledge, we'll actually have Mr. Earwood, Mr. Steve Earwood will be presenting the details of that performance report to you at the October Board Session. We've begun a series of presentations that have been led by our central office leadership within our schools regarding improved customer service. Earlier this summer, Mrs. Lopez and Mrs. Cheek, they coordinated a training partnership with the Biltmore Company, and that was focused on their world-class practice and practices in the art of hospitality and service. So going through our schools, I've received a number of positive comments, board members, regarding this particular presentation. We still have, still have probably about 30% of our schools to go, as far as that, 30, 40%, so I think a good start with that. You know, in closing, I do want to reference the recent posting of inappropriate slogans that occurred at Irwin High School. Had an opportunity to address representatives from both the school community and student body yesterday morning. And I really do believe this, and I believe this very strongly, that a monitored and respectful discussion regarding the issue of immigration is extremely appropriate. In fact, if we as a society are going to truly believe in the importance of globally educating our kids, our students, for what's ahead in the future, I think those difficult, those challenging conversations, they need to take place. And the perfect place for them to take place is that classroom where that teacher's monitoring, and again, it's very respectful. Now that said, I do need to, to say this publicly, that what is not at all appropriate is for posting any type of slogans in a school hallway or within our school that reflect insensitivity to any group of individuals. That's not what we're about, and that certainly does not reflect the values of respects, rights, and responsibility at Irwin High School or in this school district. But I believe there's always a silver lining, throughout my getting to be a pretty long career, I've seen it over and over, that there can be silver lining in issues and incidents that occur like this. And I think that what can come out of Irwin is a very good thing, that will be a model for all of us in this school system. I can report that as a result of the community and parent giving, parents giving feedback, as well as the student forum, Dr. Brown held a student forum for about an hour and a half, allowing students to, to speak. I think that was very positive, wasn't easy to hear at times, but it was a very positive thing for that school. As a result of that, Dr. Brown has now created a parent-community advisory group, in fact, he's already met with that group as of yesterday afternoon, or at least the start of that group. He will also have a student advisory council that's going to identify positive solutions to address the issues that have been raised at Irwin High School. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. At this time, I would ask for Dr. Porter, I believe he has some employee recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, board members, assembled guests, and excellent teachers in Buncombe County, welcome. Glad to see this place full. If y'all could come be here next month too, that would be wonderful. We're going to start with our employee service recognitions first tonight. And Dr. Baldwin, I'd ask you to come up front as well to take a picture. Allison Strohsneider, I believe from, a teacher from Oakley Elementary School. Allison, come on down. Just a quick question for you, Allison, 20 years, public education. When people ask you what you do, what do you say?
I teach the future.
Short, sweet, to the point, thank you very much. Allison, let's get your picture made with Dr. Baldwin, and thank you for your service. Next, next up, principal from Lester Elementary, Carleen Finger, come on down. I love that people come to Buncombe County and they stay, this is really good, really comforting, Carleen. Thank you. So, Carleen, we've been going through customer service training, so when people ask you what you do, what do you say?
I say I make a difference in children's lives every day.
Every day, and she does, thank you very much. We have a lot of school leaders, the next is Amy Dupree, principal at Sand Hill Venable. Amy, come on down. Years as well, Amy, thank you very much. So, what got you into public education in the first place? See, I mix it up on her, right? What got you into public education? And talk about your experience.
My basketball coach from TC Robertson, Rich Sizemore, got me into public education. He made me want to be a teacher and a coach myself.
Well, super, thank you very much for your service, Amy. Last but not least is our Director of Student Services, we could not get along without him, Mr. David Thompson, come on down. We call him the Fireman, because he helps put out fires in our schools, he's really good at it too. David, come on down, 30 years. I call him the Fireman, maybe I'm the only one, but I tell you what, David, talk about your experience, 30 years, obviously you love what you're doing, talk about what education means to you.
It means, to me, working with both parents and students and schools and the community to make kids' lives better. It's, it's putting in place those things that make a difference, that go beyond the academics, that, that make a difference in their lives and their future.
And you do that every day, thank you, Mr. Thompson, 30 years.
This time, thank you, we'll ask for Dr. Porter to talk to us about some good news.
We'll begin tonight in our good news section, recognizing our Title I High Performance Reward Schools, and with these recognitions, I will call up Ms. Geneva Niermeer, our interim superintendent, and I bundled that last name, and I apologize. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to make her super, no, interim director of federal programs. Geneva, come on up.
Job to, did we vote on that?
I don't think we voted. I don't think we voted on a new superintendent.
Retirement is really nice, so I'm rethinking that this week.
We have eight schools we're going to recognize tonight, and are we going to put the slide up there?
Yes, we'll put slides.
And I know that many of you administrators brought some teams from your schools, if you want to kind of make your way down to the front, that'll help us do this in a, kind of an efficient manner. These schools, the state recognizes reward schools in two ways. One is for having the highest overall performance of all student groups, you have to be in the top 10% of Title I schools in the state. The other way is if you have the, the highest progress of all student groups, again, 10% of, 10% of the Title I schools in the state. Right, this year, the state, last year, this is based on 2014-15, the state of North Carolina identified 78 Title I schools who were reward schools. We have eight of them in Buncombe County, so I think we did a very good job. All of our schools are recognized as Title I reward schools based on the first criteria, highest performance of all subgroups. So I'd like to recognize Denise Montgomery from Avery's Creek, principal, and her assistant principal, Tara Thompson, and they've brought with them, you can come forward. So they've, they've got some teachers, they've got some students, they've got some members of their Title I staff here with them, and congratulations.
Next is Black Mountain, Black Mountain Elementary, the principal is Norm Bossett, and he's brought with him Ruth Shivers, who is his reading specialist.
Black Mountain Primary, principal is Mallory McGinnis, and she's brought with her Deborah Kupiak, who is also a reading specialist. Elementary, the principal is John Barber, and he's brought with him his assistant principal, Dr. Paula Pinkerton, and some teachers with him, and his instructional coach. Nice Hall Creek Elementary, principal is Jenny Barrett, and she has a group of teachers North Buncombe Elementary, principal is Debbie Devane, she has with her assistant principal, Weaverville Elementary, Heidi Allison is the principal, and she has a teacher with And last but not least is Pisgah Elementary, the principal is Jay Dell. Also want to mention that out of the 78 schools that were recognized in the state, they also recognized the top 10% of that 78, Pisgah Elementary is one of those, there were 10 schools recognized, and Pisgah's one of those top 10 Title I schools in the state.
Next up, we would like to welcome the INCA High School Girl Softball Champions, and Really, we're going to stop applauding, she's coming down? Yes, really?
Evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, our distinguished representative Max Queen, and all the other distinguished board members. I have the distinct pleasure tonight to introduce you to an awesome group of young ladies. And I thought about a lot of adjectives that describe these young ladies, but the one that comes to my mind most is fierce. They are fierce. And I'm going to tell you, they're fierce on that softball field, I don't want to go up against them, and they're fierce in the classroom. They have an average GPA of over 4.5. Something else about them, these young ladies demonstrate leadership and character like nothing I have ever seen. But I'm going to tell you, when they get on that softball field, they got these beautiful smiles, I tell them all the time, they could make a calendar, because they're gorgeous. But let me tell you, when you see them, and they lower their eyebrows, that look in their eye, and that smile goes away, their fierceness comes out, and it is sweet. It's so good, I got to watch it down there in Greensboro, and I watched Courtney, and particularly, her eyebrows lower, it does it, they all do it, it's like, I got this. And then I watched the other team shake a little bit, because they won the 2015 State Championship with a 28-0 season. Do this with leadership, and their head coach standing beside me is by far one of the finest coaches in North Carolina, and I'm going to let her introduce these girls, but if you're really, really nice to us, we'll let you look at the ring. Not sure how I'm supposed to follow that up, but here it goes. I just want to introduce these wonderful young ladies to you. I'm going to go down who's here, and then those that are not with us, we have two that are going to college, both playing softball, one at Appalachian State and one at Florida State, which is really amazing. And the rest are somewhere playing a sport tonight, they couldn't make it, they have golf matches and tennis matches, so it's really exciting for them, I wish they could be here, this is a great honor, but we'll go on without them. So I'll start, Courtney Pearson, come up please, I want everyone to see you. Ladies, you didn't get all pretty for nothing, right? Not here, we have Shruti Patel, Jasmine Palmer, Michaela Ensley, Danielle Harris, Katie Grace Olinger, Jordan Harris, and Addison Harris. And these ladies, I've said it before, if you guys read the paper or anything, or listened to anything that Ms. Robinson just said, they are really great softball players, but they are much better people, and I'm so thankful to their parents to let me have the opportunity to work with them, and they are great young ladies. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jets, it was nice to fol, it's Sugar Jets. It was nice to follow you in the paper. While we're making a little adjustment, our next good news opportunity, Dr. Baldwin's going to share with us.
And we're going to continue the theme of leadership, and boy, I love that fierce, I'm going to work on my look, just like you had.
Cut that eyebrow.
Game face. Very proud tonight to have two guests, members of our Buncombe County School family with us, first, Mr. Dewey Andrew, the Andrew Institute for Social Enterprise, and our executive director of Eblon Charities, Mr. Bill Murdock. They're here to present a very special Young Leadership Award, so I'm going to ask them to come forward at this time, and Eblon has for the past, Bill, I think we're in four years, or three years, four years with the Leader Cast?
Uh, yeah.
Yep, our fourth, for the past four years, Eblon has sponsored a Leader Cast, and we've had the good fortune, they actually bring leaders from, and it's, it's all through video, through televised, out of Atlanta, but we've had the opportunity to send a large number of our student government representatives from across Buncombe County to that Leader Cast, and it's just been a, been a tremendous opportunity. So, Bill, thank you for, thank you and Dewey for that opportunity for our kids. So, this time, I'll, Bill, I will ask you and Dewey to come to the microphone.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin, and members of the school board, and first of all, congratulations, what a great night with all these, with all these awards. I mean, it's such a, a great reflection on not only the teachers and the schools, but the, talking about leadership, the leadership we have in the school board, and in the schools, and with the student leaders, so congratulations to, to everyone, and Dr. Baldwin, and especially congratulations, one of our certainly proudest moments, one of our flagship programs, is the Graduation Initiative with the Center for Social Enterprise. And this year, this past summer, we had the opportunity to meet with the school board, the Chamber of Commerce, the superintendent, and some principals up in Waterloo, Iowa, in the Cedar Valley area, that had heard about the Graduation Initiative, was very interested in what happens and how it works, and we spent about three hours. I was up there, Dr. Baldwin wouldn't fly up to Waterloo, Iowa, just for the day, can't imagine why, it only takes like 15 hours to get there by plane, but a great group of people were continuing our conversation with them, but they're, but they saw a great and a shining example of, of how a culture can change with schools, and how, how it can affect so many, so we're going to continue to work with that. But our second flagship program we're just proud of is the Andrew Institute for Leadership and Public Service, and created by Dewey and a longtime friend of Joe Eblon, and then all of us, one of our founding members. And as Dr. Baldwin said, through our leadership programs, Leader Cast, we also have Refresh Leadership, that Gary Gallagher, Gary Gallagher does, with Express Personnel Professionals, and we've been able to bring folks, not only through video, like Muth Arcant, president of Coca-Cola, and Condoleezza Rice, and world leaders and thought leaders, but also bring folks here like John Maxwell, and Senator Bill Friss, and Senator Tom Daschle. This next year, we'll have, Dan Gable will be here with us, former world champion, one of the winningest coaches of all time in NCAA history, will be here next October with the Andrew Institute for Leadership and Public Service. But part of that is this Young Leader Award, and this But part of that is this Young Leader Award, and this is our third year, Dewey, I believe, in presenting this award, and it's presented to the young man or young woman who's attended some of these programs, and have written an essay about what they see leadership is, how it's affected them, and what they're going to do with the knowledge that they have. And it's not just Buncombe County, but it's all the surrounding counties as well, so there's dozens and dozens of schools there, and entries to this, for this award. And so I had a chance to meet this year's recipient and his mother here just briefly, and I can certainly say that if this is any indication of what leadership of the future is, I think we're all certainly in great hands. So I'll introduce Dewey Andrew, our founder of the Andrew Institute, and the presentation.
Good evening. Okay, thank all of you, it's a pleasure to be here, glad to be here with the school board and all these great teachers, and certainly the Inca Ladies Softball Team. What an honor to go 28-0 and win the state championship. Anyway, it's a pleasure for me to be here today and to introduce a young man who is the third recipient of the scholarship funds for attending Leader Cast and writing an essay about what he has achieved and learned at Leader Cast. And this young man is a student leader, he's on the, he's an officer in the student government, he's an officer in the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, he is a tennis player, captain of the tennis team, so he's also an athlete, and I think you learn a lot going through that program or those programs. So I'll ask him to come on down, Cooper Smith. Wrote an excellent essay, and we are certainly proud to present this to him. He already has received a $500 scholarship presentation, so Cooper, we're happy to have you, and thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Also add that this young man is a proud student athlete at Irwin High School.
At this time, I'd like to call in Suzanne, call on Suzanne Swanger to do our curriculum feature, but I have to do a little editorial comment. It is so hard for me to see all of these teachers that I used to work with, and not be able to hug every one of you, but know that this is a verbal hug, and I celebrate all of your accomplishments, and thank you. It's your turn.
What a perfect lead-in. Yes, we are here to celebrate some of Buncombe County's very best teachers. It is such an honor to have the teaching excellence noticed by your peers as you were selected Teachers of the Year. You're certainly all models for us to follow. I encourage you to open your classroom doors and share your expertise with your peers. So congratulations. We are excited to recognize you this evening. We have an instructional framework that involves read, write, think, speak, and move every day. So we're doing all of that this evening, and more movement, because we want each of these individuals to come down and be with their board representative. So we'll do this by district, and I invite the district to gather here, and then when we call your name, please move toward the center with your board representative for a picture. Ready? Smile, it's a good evening? Okay. From the Inca District, please come down. We would like to recognize, from Inca High School, Kevin Franklin, with Ms. Tanya Robinson. From Inca Middle, Dawn Roberts, with Principal Leland Blankenship. Representing Candler Elementary, Angela Hall, with Principal Stephen Chandler. And absentia this evening, from Hominy Valley, Ms. Emily Anderson. From Pisgah Elementary, Clay Strube, with Principal Jay Dale. Representing Sand Hill Venable Elementary, Patsy Prickett, with Principal Amy Dupree. Let's give a, well, congratulations for the Inca Teachers of the Year. And while they're taking a picture, if Irwin District would come on down. Representing Clyde A. Irwin High School, Mr. Brian Gonzalez, with Dr. Jim Brown. Representing Clyde A. Irwin Middle School, Ms. Vicki Hicks, with Principal Chris Thompson. Representing J.P. Eblen Intermediate School, Ms. Elena Kukarets, with Chip Cody, Principal. From Emma Elementary, Sarah Knowles, with Principal Jeremy Stowe. From Johnston Elementary, Yana Hokima, with Charlotte Hips, Principal. Yana Hokima. From Lester Elementary, Cindy Ellis, with Principal Carleen Finger. From West Buncombe Elementary, Kathy Burnett, with Principal Brian Chandler. From Woodfin Elementary, Mr. Upton had a family member ill this evening, so Ms. Vicki Hensley King is escorting herself up. From Buncombe County Early College, Mr. Tim Arnold, with Bonnie Johnston, Principal. From the Nesbit Discovery Academy, Mr. John Mizell, with Nathan Allison, Principal. While that district is gathering for a principal, North Buncombe District may come on down. Representing North Buncombe High School, Mr. Justin Gillespie, with Jack Evans, Principal. From North Buncombe Middle, Ms. Allison McDevitt, with Samantha Searcy, Principal. From North Wendy Ridge Intermediate, Ms. Sherry Turner, with Brent Wise, Principal. From Barnardsville Elementary, Ms. Whitney Ball, with Dana Knight, Principal. From North Buncombe Elementary, Ms. Teresa Honeycutt, with Deborah Devane, and her Assistant Principal. Representing Weaverville Elementary, Kate Hamlin, with Principal Heidi Allison. And from Weaverville Primary, Ms. Haley Wilson, with Mr. Gardner Bridges, Principal. Congratulations to all of the North Buncombe Teachers of the Year. The Irwin District, please come forward. Representing Irwin High School, Ms. Ashley Beauregard, with Jim Lewis, Assistant Principal. From Charles D. Irwin Middle, Kathy Hawney, with Dr. Hawney Von Dolan. From Black Mountain Elementary, Carol Fogel, with Norm Bossett, Principal. From Black Mountain Primary, Lila Downs-Morale is... She is not with us this evening. Oh, she is? I see her, but you guys can't, sorry. There she is. She is on the coast at one of our Teacher Ed programs, so she's here via Skype. Congratulations. Sure.
Hi.
Kia McClanahan, with Principal Kimberly Ward. And from Community High School, Ms. Emily Fisher couldn't be with us this evening, so Jeff Conner, Principal, will accept on her behalf. If you all would stay and have one district photo? Irwin District. Irwin District, please come forward. Representing A.C. Reynolds High School, Ms. Annie Joyce, with Ms. Doris Sellers, Principal. Representing A.C. Reynolds Middle, Mr. Bob Carpenter, who could not be with us this evening, so Stanley Wielas, Assistant Principal Extraordinaire, will accept. so Stanley Wielus, Assistant Principal Extraordinaire, will accept. Dr. Johnson is on maternity leave, so Stanley has represented her well. Kane Creek Middle, Mr. William Thasher and his Principal Karen Barnhill. Representing Charles C. Bell Elementary, Cindy McDaniel with Jenny Klein, Principal. From Fairview Elementary, Jennifer Tatum with Principal Jennifer Reed. Representing Hall Creek Elementary, Ms. Rebecca Welch and Jenny Barrett, Principal. From Oakley Elementary, Ms. April Alexander and Principal Dani Fesco. Congratulations to all the Owens District. Congratulations to the Reynolds District and Robertson District, please come down. Ms. Churchill, if you'll come up. From E. Robertson High School, Mr. Chris Eisenhower with Amy Roney, Principal. Representing Valley Springs Middle School, Leah Jordan with Eddie Birchfield, Principal. Representing Charles T. Coontz Intermediate, Ms. Lori Hilliard with Robin Board, Principal. Representing Avery's Creek Elementary, Ms. Melody Warren and Denise Montgomery, Principal. Representing William Estes Elementary, Ms. Kathy Crowder and John Barber, Principal. From Glen Arden Elementary, Ms. Patty Ogul representing herself because Ms. Spee had oral surgery today. Aggressive Education Program, Ms. Jennifer Freer, Teacher of the Year with Larry Weigle, Principal. We could have a district picture, please. Congratulations. Mr. Pless, would you join Dr. Baldwin for the next presentations? We don't want you to feel left out. While we're in transition, I would like to recognize our Teacher of the Year Committee. It is the most difficult job to select from the very best, and they have put a lot of time and energy. If we have Teachers of the Year Committee for the district here, we have teachers, staff, and community members, would you please stand? Now for the moment we've been waiting for. This evening, we will know who our district winners are. We will announce the Buncombe County Teacher of the Year at our banquet later in September. So our district winners, when I call your name, please come forward. From the Inca District, Ms. Patty Prickett from Sand Hill-Venable, congratulations. From the Irwin District, congratulations, Brian Gonzalez, Irwin Hospital. From the North Buncombe District, Allison McDevitt, North Buncombe Middle. From the Reynolds District, April Alexander. From the Robertson District, Ms. Lori Hilliard. From the Owen District, Ms. Lila Downs-Morrell, Black Mountain Primary, coming to us via technology. Can you say anything to the crowd?
Yes, I'm just, I'm thank you so much, and I'm so sorry that I can't... Thank you.
Congratulations to our district winners.
Muted.
Here, if you would please exit the regional or the district winners and meet Ms. Nicole Phelps in the cafeteria area. Congratulations to all Teachers of the Year, we're very, very proud of you.
Carolina ballgame.
It's good to see you up here. Those kids had her and loved her.
Just so you guys know, halftime score in the Carolina ballgame is 13 to 10, Carolina.
Which one? Which one?
Oh, mine.
They don't know which one's yours?
That would be UNC Chapel Hill. The only Carolina, Dr. Baldwin said.
I think there's some Garnet fans in the audience.
Do you think? All right, it's now time for public comment.
Tonight, the school board will vote to change an important policy regarding parental inspection of and objection to instructional materials, or Policy 3210. Although parents will still be allowed to inspect classroom materials and file objections to inappropriate novels like The Handmaid's Tale and The Bluest Eye, teachers will now be allowed to teach these books during the challenge process. I do not believe this policy change is necessary or fair to parents and students. Let's look at lessons learned from a recent parent objection. The school board made a decision in July to keep the sexually explicit novel, The Kite Runner, on the high school reading list in spite of the graphic descriptions of child rape and its sixth grade reading level. As a parent, I objected to the novel's... I'm sorry, I need to get this closer. The novel's suitability for whole-class instruction for these reasons, asking the school board to respect academic rigor and the proper guardianship of our children. At that July meeting, some board members said taking the book off the district-approved list would be censorship. But this was not about book banning or censorship, but about judging whether a book is suitable for whole-class instruction. The book stayed in school libraries, public libraries, and bookstores, and was accessible to anyone who desired to read it. Board policy dictated that the instructor had to refrain from teaching the supplementary text until the review committee made their recommendation. At that July meeting, board members felt that opting out, that is, offering an alternative book to a student whose parent objected, was a fair option. However, research shows opting out is not a good solution because there is great value in class discussion. This situation forces an unequal education unless there is a significant group opting out. It can also set up the student who opts out to be ostracized and bullied. So please keep your original policy. It worked when the A.C. Reynolds High School teacher suddenly substituted the controversial Kite Runner novel for the classic All Quiet on the Western Front. As the saying goes, if it's not broken, don't fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we'll move to the action agenda. We have an application for Public School Building Capital Fund and the North... to use North Carolina lottery funds for that capital work. Are there any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I do have a question regarding this.
Yes, sir.
As I see in the document, it's giving us the numbers as estimated costs. And am I correct in my assumption that none of this work has been bid yet?
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, it's just merely estimates that we have for these...
Estimates based on specs.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board members?
So when it is bid, presumably we'll see that information when it's available?
Any other questions? At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the application for the use of the Capital Outlay Lottery Funds for Phase III of the Nesbit Discovery Academy. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. We also have an item on the action agenda for Robertson High School, the approval of the utility easement request, any...
I believe, oh yeah, questions first, I'm sorry.
Any questions?
I just have one, and probably for Board Attorney, Mr. Campbell. Once this, if it's approved, is approved, and I know the paperwork still has to be done, you have to see what comes from the entity. If there's a problem as it relates to the easement or equipment within that easement, is financial payment, if there's something, fall back to Buncombe County schools? Or does it fall to the entity from the point of the easement going forward? And for how long? And is that covered, I guess? And is that covered, I guess, is my question.
Right. The motion will be to allow the Chair and Superintendent to be authorized to execute the document, so we will check all legal responsibilities, liabilities. Anytime you're granting a utility easement, you're simply granting the use of your property, and you retain fee ownership of your property. So any malfunctions with equipments or other things are the responsibility of the grantee at that point. But we will check all that. If there's some issue with the easement, then the Chair won't sign, and it would come back to you. If there's some problem with the equipment down the line, that would be the responsibility of the grantee.
Right.
And they would also have liability if something went wrong and our property was damaged as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions from other board members? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to authorize the Board Chair and the Superintendent to execute a utility easement agreement for the Sewer Manhole, get this, number 3226672, on the T.C. Robertson High School site indicated by Caitlin Enterprises LLC to serve the Springside Township Townhomes Development. The easement is contingent upon Caitlin Enterprises preparing and filling the easement and the survey documentation and paying for that easement fee, which is $500. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I would like to call to the attention of the people in the room that the personnel report came with an addendum, as did the Advisory Council member additions. It also came with an addendum. Items that we are voting on are the minutes from August 6, 2015, the personnel report, the record retention and disposal items, the approval of payroll deduction for ablyn charities, Irwin High School use of capital outlay athletic allotment, the Advisory Council members and names that were also on the addendum, Advisory Council members for 2015-16, and the policies for second reading, which is Policy 3210. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? We board members have received information on the 2015-2016 Yellow Bus List and the announcement for future meetings. The Board of Education has a regular meeting on Thursday, October 1, on... I messed up the date last month. October 1, 2015, at 6:30 PM in the Minitorium. And also, I'd like to remind people in the audience, as well as our board members, that we have a Teacher of the Year banquet on September 15 at 6:30, and we will be at the Asheville Renaissance Hotel. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam Chair.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We can see the rest of the ballgame. Thank you very much.